Him great.
I hope that August 24th in this day becomes a celebration of passion, hard work, dedication and mentorship.
I love Kobe, so the greatest player of all time, best Laker ever.
Okay, who's number one and who's number two as far as fat?
She's number one, I'm number two.
For city leaders, the name Kobe Bryant and the Lakers brought something special. Prestige for LA with seven NBA championships and five wins, along with unity among Angelino fans.
Kobe Bryant has taught all of us in Los Angeles that this city has a fighting spirit.
When Kobe Bryant and the Lakers were playing, we were all Angelinos.
But the former MVP is more than just a basketball legend, he is also a philanthropist. He and his wife donate time and money to causes for youth and the homeless.
On behalf of the 60,000 people that tonight in LA County will sleep on the streets, I want to say thank you because you recognize their plight before a lot of us. We are late to the party.
On his last Lakers game Bryant scored a legendary 60 points, and he doesn't plan to slack off. Among his retirement plans, new business ventures, a strict workout regimen to stay in shape, and a new addition to the family.
We are expecting another baby girl.
Kobe Bryant, LA wishes you well in your new game plan. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Bryant says he may also try some new things such as skiing, surfing and skydiving. While if you transfer between bus and rail in Noho, you know how dangerous the switch can be. Until recently, you had to cross a busy street to change lines, but not anymore. Gil Reyes shows us a new pedestrian tunnel that's making commutes a lot safer.
It used to work like this. Transferring between the orange bus line station to the red line rail stop in North Hollywood meant crossing the street first. And not just any street, Lancashire Boulevard, one of the busiest thoroughfares in the 818. But those days are over.
Now they have easy access, it's going to speed up travel across the valley. It's really going to be another step forward, I think, in the usefulness and ease and speed of mass transit through the San Fernando Valley.
Metro celebrates the opening of a 150-foot-long pedestrian tunnel linking the two lines in North Hollywood. The underground walkway is expected to shave minutes from your commute. It took two years to build and cost $22 million.
When you go to the voters and you say, "We want you to tax yourselves, to invest in your own communities," you take a risk because you don't know, will they open? Will they be successful? Will they be on time and on budget? And it is a wonderful feeling to see that we're helping manage an MTA that delivers on time, on budget, is being able to protect the community, improve our roads and give people more options.
Mayor Eric Garcetti is asking us, the voters, to approve a half-cent sales tax increase this fall to fund even more transportation-related improvements. In North Hollywood, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
If approved, your tax dollars could help build some 40 projects over 40 years, including a rail tunnel through the Sepulveda Pass linking the valley to the west side. Well, from making your commute safer to making it a lot cooler, and if you ride the bus, you know how hot it can get waiting for it, especially in the summer. But the city has a plan to make the experience more comfortable, especially for older citizens prone to heat stroke. Gil Reyes has more. Gil?
Yes, Yana, this bus stop on the corner of Eagle Rock Boulevard and San Fernando Road is one of the more popular bus stops here in the community of Glacell Park. A lot of the reason is new school and a new apartment complex built nearby, just within walking distance from here. So ridership is not a problem. What is a problem is the heat, specifically the sun that's bearing down on hot summer days like today. But the city has a plan that's made in the shade. Waiting for the bus can be especially unpleasant for Margaret Chang when the heat is on. Yeah, what do you like to see here?
Benches, a shape over the bench.
Her bus stop in Glacell Park has some shading on the southbound side, but none on the northbound side. And she's headed north. There's also no seating.
If I sit over there, I cannot see the bus, I would miss the bus. So I would light the benches for long time, a shape over the bench, even better.
She will soon get her wish. The city breaks ground on a 20-by-50-foot transit pavilion with big canopies to help beat the heat, the rain and more.
We're going to have security lighting, we're going to have benches to while you wait for the transit, and all of this then surrounded by drought-tolerant landscaping.
The beautification aims to increase the comfort level of seniors, also new riders like tenants in recently-built apartments and students from Sotomayor learning academies. Councilman Gil Sadio says more development is planned.
I envision, you know, elegant housing down the road, affordable workforce, market rates. We need housing in the city and this is an area where we can build without displacement.
And building those projects near transit stops to encourage more use of public transportation. But it has to be comfortable.
Shade and covering, I think it's going to mean so much for the community.
In Glacell Park, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The city hopes to complete renovations next summer. Turning now to LA World Airport's own modernization program at LAX, it's a multi-billion-dollar windfall for LA, and you just might have a chance to cash in if you're a small business. Anna Marcos tells us about Lawa's unique offer to small business owners.
Inclusion is the name of the game as LA World Airport launches its $5.5 billion modernization program, one of the largest construction projects in LA history. And Lawa leaders want every small business owner in LA to get a piece of the pie.
What we're hoping is that the local small businesses that attended this forum today will have opportunities to meet with the potential prime bidders on this contract and will be getting on their teams.
Small business participation, diverse business, minority business will be highly encouraged.
700 business leaders networked and mingled at the small business forum at LAX. The first project up for bid will be the automated people mover, the centerpiece of the new LAX project, which will move people throughout the airport without the need for cars. The jobs up for grabs include construction, design, engineering, finance, landscaping, maintenance operations and much more.
We look forward to you bringing that creativity and ingenuity, bringing something new and something different for us to build upon here.
LAX is doing something that's never been done. It's not only encouraging and practicing diversity in its hiring, it's demanding it from all its contractors and subcontractors as well.
Absolutely, it's very helpful. We've been tracking these projects and trying to go after that, trying to collect as much information as we can.
Lawa leaders say small businesses don't always have it easy getting in on airport bids, but they hope their new all-inclusive push helps build not only a better, less congested airport, but a better and economically stronger LA. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Lawa leaders say they've put policies in place to make sure small businesses are involved in this project. For more information, visit connectinglax.com. And if you're a small merchant in LA that flies the rainbow flag, then you may want to listen up. Anna Marcos reports from the LA Times LGBT Forum on some changes that could help boost your business.
If you're gay or lesbian, there's probably never been a better climate to start a business in LA. One panelist at the LA Times LGBT Business Forum touched on new state laws such as AB-53, which help improve the bottom line for the rainbow fly community and their businesses.
The insurance companies in the state of California report in their minority spend how much is going to LGBT businesses, and that has taken the numbers from six figures to seven figures.
Sometimes it's always about gay pride, and it's all great, but let's talk about the power of our purse in this community and how we are a driver of the economy.
Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell talked about his Open for Business Initiative, which will help lower permit fees for small businesses, speed up the process for merchants to renew their permits and offer case management services for small business.
In Los Angeles, three-quarters of employees work at small businesses. So why on earth aren't we prioritizing that? Because that's our economy, that's the backbone of our economy.
Under state law, you can even get certified as an LGBT business. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
An agreement years in the making has finally been reached between LAX and residents who live near the airport. Another major corridor in LA gets the beauty treatment, and some kids in Silmar have some fun with LAPD officers while learning important life lessons. All these stories in City B. The city of Los Angeles and a group representing residents who live near LAX have reached an agreement that will put an end to lawsuits and disputes over a proposal to move the north airfield runways 260 feet closer to residential neighborhoods. The agreement will require that alternative safety measures be taken before airport officials can consider relocating the runways. The agreement will allow major modernization projects at Los Angeles International Airport to continue, including a people mover and a rental car center. Officials said this ends a long war between residents and LAX.
Today, we're at a day where there is peace and a significant promise of progress ahead.
Nearly 100 community members came out recently to help beautify Western Avenue as part of Mayor Eric Garcetti's Great Streets Initiative. Volunteers painted six new murals, picked up trash and pruned landscaping. City officials said that cleanup and artwork will not only benefit local residents, but all LA residents.
As they're driving home, sometimes in traffic unfortunately, they can see the beautiful artworks on the wall, the beautiful quotes from our philosophers, from thinkers, great thinkers. So we could at least add a little bit of sunshine in their drives.
The annual LAPD baseball swing-a-thon kicked into high gear recently, bringing together kids in Silmar and LAPD officers for a friendly game of baseball and other fun activities. Officials say the event promotes a positive lifestyle, physical fitness, sports and teamwork. The swing-a-thon includes a baseball skills clinic given by the law enforcement teams, a rock climbing wall, extreme obstacle courses and rob contests for big prizes. Kids also recited the Just Say No pledge, a promise to say no to drugs, gangs, crime and bullying.
The teachers help out a lot in the community and then they give them really good advice to grow, you know, no drugs, no crime, no bullying and all that, and they need to learn. So it's very positive for every kid, especially mine.
And as you just saw, baseball is a great American tradition that brings communities and families together. Spending time playing catch and hitting baseballs with your kids creates lifelong memories. But if you're in the military, you know how fleeting those times can be, specifically when duty calls. But the LA Dodgers are helping to make the grief of military deployments a bit easier. Gil Reyes explains.
Throughout its history, baseball has forged bonds between fathers and sons, all family members really, from youth players to team moms to siblings in the stands. But for military families, deployment separates and reigns out those cherished moments when everyone's together.
When I served in the Gulf War, I mean, it's, it was rough out there. I mean, I missed childbirth with my first kid and just for, just Dodgers even and Cal Ripken to either just recognize what we did for our country to allow other kids like this to do this, just great.
The Cal Ripken Senior Foundation offers this free baseball clinic to 175 kids whose parents serve or have served in the US military. Some of the kids don't have dads around to teach them how to hit, throw and field because they're on duty. So LA Dodgers players like JP Howell and Bud Norris fill in to help out for a day at the Dodgers Youth Dream Field at Belvedere Park in East Los Angeles.
I mean, this is what we do with the foundation, is giving kids opportunities they may not otherwise have. And one of our focuses, along with MLB Players Trust, is focusing on the military youth and really getting them involved.
Seems like a no-brainer, right? I mean, this is after all, America's favorite pastime, so why not give back to the military men and women and their families who helped make America so great? This, today, this is what it's all about.
Absolutely, you know, my father, my grandfather served and knowing what that meant to me and to my upbringing and childhood and to know what our servicemen and servicewomen today are just so important in our livelihood and we can't thank them enough. Words are not enough to give back to their kids and to see them out here and too, and a couple of handshakes, it's really worthwhile and just makes everybody feel good.
Some servicemen, lucky enough to be in attendance, express their gratitude for this free training seminar for their kids.
It's a really special thing, I'd really like to thank the Dodgers for putting this event together.
It's a great way, you know, for military families to feel appreciated.
While spending some family fun time. At the Dodgers Youth Dream Field at Belvedere Park, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
All 175 kids also walked home with free t-shirts, baseballs and gloves. While growing up in a disadvantaged neighborhood can be tough, many times kids get caught up in a vicious cycle of violence and crime with no way out. But one program is hoping to change that by getting young people in East LA on the right side of the law. Anna Marcos has more on a summer youth employment program at the LAPD's Hollenbeck Division.
How do you explain the shooting death of a 14-year-old boy by police, even if justified to a group of young people from the projects? Well, how about hiring some of them for the summer and letting them hang out and work side by side with the cops?
We want to give them some work experience, we want to continue to build relationships with the youth of the community.
This is the new summer youth employment program at the LAPD's Hollenbeck Division, and boy, do these kids have burning questions for the cops, such as what did happen in that recent police shooting that left 14-year-old Jesse James Romero, a gang graffiti suspect, dead in Boyle Heights.
The individual fired at the officers, and then the officers returned fire. And it turned out that this individual was 14 years old, he would have been 15 this month.
The 32 kids in the program learn what police go through in making split-second life and death decisions every day. In the meantime, they earn their pay doing everything from washing cars to filing paperwork.
It's more like an opportunity to like, get to see what they do on a daily basis, how they quickly answer the calls, they get on their vehicles and run out and it's really, it's crazy.
The program is a joint effort with the Housing Authority of the city of LA to give kids from the Ramona Gardens Housing Project a chance to forge new relationships with those who protect the law.
I grew up here around all Boyle Heights, Lincoln Heights. Where I grew up, it was more like, okay, LAPD them and there was us. So it wasn't, we wouldn't really interact. And I feel like now that I've got to know officers, they're also people, they're normal.
The kids are about halfway done through this program, and once they're done, there's another perk waiting, job references from no less than the LAPD.
It does take a lot of work to, whatever you're going to do in life, it takes a lot of work.
Police hope it leads to a perk for them as well, better relations with the future leaders of their community and fewer scenes like this. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The kids in the program are in high school and college. The only requirements are that they are between 14 and 21, live in the Ramona Gardens project and are ready and willing to work. Well, the LAPD is also putting kids to work, but their focus is on attracting and recruiting more girls to the department, and it starts with camp. Gil Reyes has more.
Lean farther back from the ladder. There you go.
No guts, no glory for about 100 teenage girls chasing a dream.
I want to be a firefighter.
Why?
I always wanted to be a hero growing up.
But to get there, they'll have to be as good, if not better, than the guys at climbing ladders, dousing flames and saving lives. Welcome to the first-ever LA City Fire Department Girls Camp, a two-day introductory seminar in San Pedro to help entice more young women to join the LA City Fire Department.
That is an area that we need to improve upon. Right now, we have about 3%, it's about 100 females. Our goal is to double that number, and I think we're well on our way towards accomplishing that.
Female firefighters from Seattle to San Diego help demonstrate what it takes. For starters, they'll have to strap on 70 pounds of heavy gear for a typical firefight. These young women, ages 14 to 18, say they're determined to be first responders. Helping them after today are firefighter magnet programs. You'll find them at Wilson High School in El Sereno and Banning High in Wilmington. There are also youth fire academies at several fire stations to participate in throughout the year.
So the goal is, after this camp today, to feed them into one of our various youth development programs so that they stay learning and active.
And dreaming big, to eventually be where usually the boys are, in a dangerous but rewarding career, helping others. In San Pedro, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Young men and women ages 14 to 20 can also take part in the City Fire Cadet Program. It could light the spark to a future career. Log on to firecadet.org for info. If you love jazz, then you're in the right place. No other city has more jazz history west of Chicago. So every summer, LA hosts a concert celebrating those sweet sounds from Central Avenue. Gil Reyes shows us.
At 85 years young, jazz legend Kenny Borell shows us he's still got it. Borell, one of the headliners at the Central Avenue Jazz Festival. From the 1930s through the 1950s, Central Avenue was the epicenter of West Coast jazz. Artists who passed through include Duke Ellington, Billie Holiday and Charlie Parker, to name a few. Also Ernie Andrews, who at 89 years old, still performs to this day. During their heyday, they entertained audiences here at the legendary Dunbar Hotel.
Central Avenue was the spot where African-American performers came when they came to perform in Beverly Hills, when they couldn't stay in the hotels in Beverly Hills, they came to Central Avenue.
We celebrate that history, we celebrate that legacy, but also recognize and realize the cultural diversity that exists today, and we want to celebrate that as well. And we think music is the best way to do that.
Over two dozen acts performed on the festival's 21st anniversary. On Central Avenue, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Jazz legends in the making like 19-year-old Ray Goran and 20-year-old Aaron Shaw also performed. Well, it's a party for your taste buds during a fine food and wine tasting, Navy vessels flex their military might during Fleet Week, and a Beatles exhibit that'll take you back in time. All this and this week's things to do. Labor Day weekend just got tastier. Food lovers get ready to indulge in the ultimate food tasting experience. LA Times is hosting its annual festival celebrating LA's culinary delights. Paramount Studios will be transformed into an elaborate pop-up block party featuring tastings and wines from some of the best restaurants in the city. It all takes place on Labor Day on the Paramount Pictures Studio backlot. For more, visit events.latimes.com/taste. LA Fleet Week is a free public event at America's number one port, featuring guided ship tours, military and aerial demonstrations. Entertainment includes live music, educational programs, fireworks and food trucks. Fleet Week is an annual patriotic tradition where active military ships recently deployed in overseas operations dock in a major US city for one week. This year marks the first time Los Angeles has hosted an official Fleet Week event. For more, visit portoflos angeles.org. Ladies and gentlemen, the Beatles brings us back to the early 60s when rock and roll was re-energized, some say saved, by four lads from Liverpool. On display at the Grammy Museum are many Beatles-related pop culture artifacts from the period, as well as correspondence, instruments, posters, photographs, interviews, interactive displays and an oral history booth in which visitors can leave their own impressions of the Beatles. Check it out at the Grammy Museum July 1st through the 5th. For more, visit gramymuseum.org. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition, but before we go, a correction on a story we aired during the week of August 13th. We reported that LA City Council approved $115 million to keep the Our Cycle LA program running, but rather, City Council approved $117,000 to keep the program going. I'm Yana Kane from all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
In fact, the rules of decorum while we're not in session are much more strictly enforced. So, Mr. Herman, no more.
Members, please report to the council chambers so that we can... Members, please report to the council chambers so that we can begin our work for today. Members, please report to the council chambers so that we can begin our work for today. Members, please report to the council chambers so that we can begin our work for today. Members, please report to the council chambers so that we can begin our work for today. Please report to the council chambers. Members, please report to the council chambers so that we can begin our work for today. Members, please report to the council chambers so that we can begin our work for today. Members, please report to the council chambers so that we can begin our work for today. Members, please report to the council chambers so that we can begin our work for today. Members, please report to the council chambers so that we can begin our work for today. Members, please report to the council chambers so that we can begin our work for today. Want to welcome everyone to Los Angeles City Hall and to your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. We do not, Madam Clerk, have a quorum at this time, but we have some very important presentations. So why don't we begin today with our presentation portion? And I'll start out with Mr. Englander. Mr. Englander, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. Today, I am honored to recognize our LAPD Officer Donald Thompson. And let's give it up for Officer Thompson. Officer Thompson is an Emergency Operations Division bomb technician with the Los Angeles Police Department. So, we knew he was good under pressure. But we didn't know just how good until it was Christmas Day, 2013. And in fact, on that day, December 25th, Officer Thompson was driving southbound on the 405 freeway to start his shift, when he saw a vehicle about a half a mile away collide with a barrier wall. The car then veered across all lanes of traffic and collided with a concrete center divider. Upon impact, the rear of the car caught fire. It continued to slide for about another 350 feet before coming to a rest area approximately 150 feet directly in front of Officer Thompson's car. Seeing the vehicle fire spreading quickly and realizing that there was very little time to spare, without pause, Officer Thompson immediately pulled his vehicle to the center divider, jumped two concrete freeway dividers, and let me tell you, he probably actually just walked right over them. I would have been crawling over them. He stepped over them. And he rushed to the flaming vehicle. All of this while the fire was quickly traveling through the driver's compartment. Officer Thompson, without regard for his own life or safety, rushed forward with the rescue, to rescue the driver. He forced open the badly damaged front door, and after several attempts to release the unconscious driver from his seatbelt, he finally freed the driver and dragged him out of the vehicle. The driver received treatment for moderate injuries, and Officer Thompson was treated for first-degree burns to his arms and his face. As well, second-degree burns to his right hand. As if that wasn't enough, this man, who's so dedicated to his community, to this city, as a first responder, he got out of the hospital. Where did he go? He went and finished his shift. He went and put on his uniform and went back to work. In May of this year, he was actually scheduled to be here to be honored, but he had to postpone because somebody else called him to honor him as well. President Obama honored Officer Thompson with the Medal of Valor, the nation's highest award for police officers who have showed exceptional courage, and he let us know that he had to go because that guy was termed out and we're not, so he wanted to be here. In addition to being honored with the Medal of Valor Award, Officer Donald Thompson has also received the American Police Hall of Fame National Officer of the Year Award, the California State Firefighter Association Medal of Valor Award, and the Carnegie Hall Medal received in December 2014. It has been said that the hard times don't create heroes, they reveal the heroes within us. We're so fortunate to have him as part of our team and our family. It's also been said that the reason we have police officers is because firefighters need heroes too. So with that, I want to say congratulations to our hero. On a personal note, our daughters played volleyball together years ago, and he's a resident and constituent of CD-12, but a true hero. He is nearing 30 years of dedicated service to the Los Angeles Police Department, to the men and women of this department and to this city, and not on drop and wants to continue, we were talking about this earlier, maybe challenging Mr. Pasinger's record, we'll see what happens there, but a true hero that lives amongst us, that walks amongst us, a true giant in our community, my good friend, and I want to say congratulations from all of us to you. So on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, we are so proud to recognize Officer Donald Thompson, our Medal of Valor champion. I'd like you to say a few words as well, please.
Actually, I wasn't expecting to say anything today, but I want to thank you all for having me here and your hospitality. And a few minutes ago, I was asked if I was ever in that situation again, would I do it? And I said I would do it again in a heartbeat because, you know, we live in a time where people don't care much about each other, and we need to start caring about each other a bit more, whether you know the person or you don't know. I mean, even strangers have mothers, fathers, and brothers and loved ones, so we should all think about that when you see someone in a time of need.
Officer, again, on behalf of the council, we want to thank you for your service to the greatest city in the world, and we are fortunate to have you. Mr. Englander, this was an excellent presentation, well-deserved, and you are, sir, extremely tall.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, again, let's give him one more round of applause. If I can quickly go to Mr.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, in the absence of Councilman O'Farrow and Councilman Sadio, it's my honor to welcome several friends from the Salvadorian community. We've got Lidovina Magarin, who is the Vice Minister of Foreign Relations for the Salvadorians abroad, Mercedes Pena, General Counsel of El Salvador here in Los Angeles, Carlos Vancorano, Executive Director of SALIF. And we have two youth representing the hundreds of youth that are here this weekend for the Fourth Annual Salvadorian Youth Summit. There are members, nearly nine million Salvadorians in the world, with nearly a third of them living in the United States. Most of them call Los Angeles home and the Ninth District specifically. In 2014, I had the honor of visiting the country of El Salvador as part of a delegation to witness the inauguration of President Salvadoro Sanchez Sarin. In his speech, President Sarin recognized the importance of investing in our youth because youth are our future. I knew right then that the president had the right idea, and we share similar goals. As representative of the council district with one-third of the population under the age of 18, we need to always looking to see how we can invest in our youth. We need to ensure that our youth are equipped with the proper tools, the knowledge, and opportunities to succeed in life. That's why it's been a distinct pleasure to work with organizations like SALIF and leaders like Carlos Vancorano, who has dedicated his life's work to ensuring the Salvadorian Americans, with specific emphasis on our youth, have an opportunity to succeed. And to the youth, and there will be hundreds of youth that are in town this weekend, I applaud your efforts and your ingenuity to create a support system and global network of youth all around the world. It takes vision, leadership, and innovation. The work that you and your peers have completed over the past few years will serve as a precedent, not only for other young Salvadorians, but all immigrant communities who are in search of greater sense of self and a network after they leave home. To our special guests and dignitaries, I want to thank you all for the work that you do in our community and abroad. It's been a pleasure working with all of you to empower our youth and improve the quality of life for all Angelenos, whether you have been there for generations or just arrived. I look forward to continuing to work with you and to partner with you as you serve our community. And so with that, members, I'd like to turn the floor over to...
Well, let's give them a round of applause before... Well, let's give them a round of applause before Mr. Price turns the floor over to anyone.
I'm going to ask Vice Minister for Foreign Relations for Salvadorians Abroad, the Honorable Magarin, to say a few words.
Buenos dias a todos y a todas nuevamente. Muchisimas gracias por recibirnos.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning, everybody. Thank you so much for receiving us today.
Se que este es un consejo que está muy de cerca en la comunidad salvadoreña.
I know this council is very close to the Salvadoran community.
Muchas gracias por todo ese apoyo a la comunidad. Hoy estamos aquí.
Thank you so much for the support that you provide to our community. We are here today.
Porque el día de mañana y el domingo tenemos la tercera cumbre de jóvenes salvadoreños viviendo en Estados Unidos.
Because tomorrow and Sunday, we have the Third Annual Summit of Salvadoran living here in Los Angeles.
Y como gobierno estamos apoyando este esfuerzo de un grupo de jóvenes salvadoreños que se han denominado Rejues.
And as a government, we are supporting the efforts of this young generation that have nominated the ambassadors of our country.
Que hacen un gran esfuerzo por promover la identidad, los valores, la cultura, el respeto también a la soberanía del pueblo de Estados Unidos.
They're doing a great effort trying to promote the sovereignty of the United States.
Y también aman a El Salvador.
And they also love El Salvador.
Así que muchas gracias.
So, thank you so much.
Thank you. I'd also like to invite two of our youth to just say a few words. Mario Arguello and Manuel Castori.
Good morning, City of Los Angeles Council President, Council Members. On behalf of the Network of Salvadorian Youth Abroad, also known as Rejues, the Salvadorian American Leadership and Educational Fund, also known as SALIF, we want to thank you for welcoming us, the Salvadorian youth, to our beloved city of Los Angeles. As an Angeleno and born from a Salvadoran family, I am happy to once again participate in the Third Salvadorian Youth Summit in Los Angeles. I attended last year's summit in Texas, and I had the opportunity to meet like-minded individuals from different cities of the United States and El Salvador to represent our Salvadorian communities and make a change. We also want to thank Council Members Mitchell O'Farrow and Council Member Karen Price for their support and this resolution. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Manuel?
Good morning, Council. I just wanted to say thank you for having us here. And I wanted to share briefly the reason why we started this organization. And it's basically through the recognition that as Salvadorian youth here in the United States, we have lived a large variety of experiences. And we believe that through the sharing of those experiences, we can gather enough knowledge and tools that we can use and address the situations of our community here in the United States and also in El Salvador. So from there, we understand that the change begins now and with each of us, and that is actually what just was forward. So thank you again for having us.
Thank you. And on the occasion of the Third Annual Salvadorian Youth Summit, we present this, and we know that the sessions tomorrow and Sunday will be successful, and we are proud that you are here in our city.
You know, Mr. Price, I'll let you take the photo. You know, before you sit down, if I could just say, this is the greatest city in the world. And the reason why it's so great is because we're so diverse. But even though we may be diverse and celebrate different holidays, we still have the same desire, which is to provide opportunities for our young people. So I commend you for that. And I also want to give a special shout-out to Carlos, who's been a friend of mine for a long time, a tireless worker in the community. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give them one more round of applause. Thank you, Mr. Price. Let us quickly go through the agenda. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Could you call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Harris Dawson, Weezar, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrow, Price, Rue, Wesson, ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Corretts moves, Weezar seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Martinez moves, Price seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, item number one is an item notice for public hearing.
Do you have cards?
Yes, sir.
Okay, continue. Let's continue.
Items two through 10 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, members, we're going to take up items two through 10. Mr. Krikorian.
Item 10, call Special Police, Mr. President, for an amendment.
10, we'll hold 10. Let us prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That brings us where?
Mr. President, for the record, item number two has an ordinance, and that ordinance will carry forward one week to September 9th unless reconsidered with 12 members present.
Well, I think, Madam Clerk, we're just going to have to let that carry over. I don't think we're going to meet that mark today. So that item will carry over.
Yes, sir. Next is items 11 through 15, and those are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. I'm assuming you have cards on these items?
Yes, sir. There are cards on 11, 12, 13, and 14, sir.
Okay, then why don't we move with 15?
Real quick, Mr. President. Item 13, there is a request to refer that item back to committee.
Okay, so we will send that back to committee. And now we are voting on item 15?
Yes, sir.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, and the remaining items again are what, 11 and 12 and 14?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, for a special presentation, only one person in this council could pull something this special off. And I'd like to now defer to Mr. Paul Corretts to take at least some of us down a trip, a pleasant, pleasant trip for many of us. Mr. Corretts, the floor is yours. Don't be shy. Join Mr. Corretts, if you would.
Well, thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. It's the utmost delight that I ask you to join me in celebrating one of the most incredible talents of our time, Donovan. He's a unique creative force, and he has been that for more than half a century. He's a truly inspiring artist who was installed in the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame in 2012. And we honor his vision and his voice, and we thank him for gifting us with so many great songs. But we also look back 50 years ago, or 50 years ago tomorrow, it was that time that Donovan's hit single, Sunshine Superman, which helped change the face of music, reached number one on the Billboard charts. Indeed, Donovan is about to embark on a 50th Anniversary Sunshine Superman Tour, memorializing the single and album of that name. And here it is, for those of you who might be old enough like myself to remember it. Through his music and his life, Donovan has been a vagabond poet and a troubadour, a rebel and a guide, a visionary and a uniter, a peaceful gentleman and a voice for change. He has lived an incredibly rich and varied life, starting with his early years in Glasgow and then in England into the 1960s, when he became one of the world's best-known and loved performers, and then continuing straight on through today. For his extraordinary creative output has continued undaunted and forever fresh. So first, let me say welcome to Los Angeles and at City Hall Donovan. We also welcome Donovan's wife Linda and family. I'm also pleased that we're joined by renowned radio personality Cynthia Fox from The Sound 100.3, who will also share a few words about Donovan in a moment. If we had the time this morning, we could easily spend several enjoyable hours discussing how he made magical songs like Sunshine Superman, Catch the Wind, Mellow Yellow, Colors, Hurdy-Gurdy Man, Season of the Witch, Where Your Love Like Heaven, There Is a Mountain, Jennifer Juniper, Atlantis, To Susan on the West Coast Waiting, my favorite but a little more forgotten song, Lulania, and many others. And we could mention all the creative geniuses that he influenced, not the least of which was The Beatles, whom he instructed and inspired about guitar fingering, songwriting, and spirituality. So there's a lot of stuff we could spend all day talking about, but I want to focus on what it is about Donovan that has meant so much to me. As a kid in the 60s, I loved that Donovan made music, but also made more than music. He gave us a sense of the world opening up to us. A song wasn't just a song, it was a way of understanding, a feeling heightened by his understandings of all kinds of music, including folk, jazz, blues, eastern music, west coast rock, other spoken and musical traditions woven together with his visionary spirit. And now in the 21st century, we can look back on the music of the 60s and love the songs and notes and harmonies and changes in tone. But we also love what they were about and where they were coming from, and Donovan was at the center of that, for he was a great awareness raiser. And I think that ability of his to think globally and environmentally, as well as personally and intimately, changed the world then and has continued to have a long-lasting and growing impact. And when I sort of discovered rock and roll, a friend of mine introduced me to it on the radio at the very end of a long summer in 1966. I remember the two songs I first heard, Sunny Afternoon by The Kinks and Sunshine Superman by Donovan. So 50 years later, that's had a lasting impact on my life. So we have so much to be grateful for. And now I'd like to ask Cynthia Fox to share a few thoughts as well.
First up, I have to say it's an absolute honor to be here and representing everybody from 100.3 The Sound, Southern California's classic rock. And actually, Mimi Chin, our resident flower child who hosts Peace, Love, and Sunday Mornings, asked me to come down. It is an absolute honor. We have to thank Donovan for mentioning and referencing Los Angeles in his songs. It's a tribute to the City of the Angels. It's been an honor for us to be able to play his music on the air these many years working in radio. And I have to bring up a really nice quote from Jenny Boyd, who actually inspired the song Jennifer Juniper, has a book about creativity. And I think one of Donovan's lasting legacies is the fact that he inspires people to be creative. Paul Horn, who toured with Donovan, said, "There's a certain kind of magic there, the magic that people can be transformed through sound, simple sound." So we want to thank Donovan for creating music that reflects gentleness, kindness, hope, optimism, imagination, creativity, and love. And that is what, you know, our society is built upon. And in closing, I have to say, there is a legend that when Donovan played the Hollywood Bowl and it started to rain, that he invoked flower power to stop the rain so the concert could proceed. So my request for Donovan today would be, could you invoke some flower power so it will rain in Southern California? Just have this little drought going on. Thank you very much. It's an honor to be here.
Thank you. We'd love to have you.
And now it's my great privilege to ask Donovan to speak to us and maybe even sing a song or two afterwards.
Welcome, sir.
May I speak now? Sure. Thank you for this great honor. I'm visiting your country, of course, with my music again. Los Angeles was always a second home to many a singer-songwriter from Britain and Ireland and Scotland, and it still is. We visit quite a lot. The song Sunshine Superman. Well, it's a love song for Linda and I, she stands right behind me. But when we met, we realized we were on the same journey. And that journey would be soon taken by a generation to find a new awareness and try to raise consciousness. And that's what Linda and I were bonded on. We still are working on that today. My tour that just begins very soon will be spreading the word and trying to teach children everywhere meditation to de-stress the future. I want to thank you again for this great honor, and I'm very pleased to be here today.
We want to thank you, Donovan. We want to thank you for adjusting your calendar to spend time with us today. It's exciting for so many of us to meet you. And I always felt that the coolest thing in the world would be for anybody that could go by just one name, so like, just Donovan. And I'm sure for those of us that grew up during that time, we'll be humming Mellow Yellow and Hurdy-Gurdy Man for the next four or five days. I mean, right now, I'm just mellow yellow, you know? So I'm sure that you're going to do well. And thank you for giving us this treat. We really appreciate you, sir. Let's give him another round of applause. Mr. Bonin, Mike Bonin, our own Hurdy-Gurdy Man.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Corretts, thank you for bringing Donovan in here. I was born a year after Sunshine Superman. Sunshine Superman, man, that's hard to say. But it was always one of my favorite songs growing up. And my musical era really is the 1960s and 1970s. I probably know three dozen songs post-Led Zeppelin. And so your songs and your music were ones that I grew up with. And I was just telling Mr. Bloomingfield, in high school, I actually tried to smoke-dried banana peels because I'd heard the legend of Mellow Yellow. For the record, it doesn't do anything. But I should also, I'm a big comic book fan. And I loved Sunshine Superman because it also mentioned Green Lantern as a kid, and so it appealed to what I was reading. But I should mention, I'm sure you know this, but one of the most acclaimed comic book writers of all time, Grant Morrison, who writes for DC Comics, created a character, Sunshine Superman, who is part of a team called the Love Syndicate of Dreamworld, which tries to capture and personify the ethos of the mid to late 60s. And it's a tribute to you because he was a big fan of the song as well. So thanks for being here. Congratulations on the great stuff you do.
So I don't know if we could ask you to grace us with a song or two?
Perhaps I can do that, yes. Over there. Hello, City Hall. Now, that song in particular... Now, that song in particular. I started writing on a beach near here, down Sunset Boulevard in Santa Monica, walking the sand with that lady there, Linda. She's the Sunshine Supergirl. And here's a little bit of the song, which opened a door to an album following, which you saw over there. But this is the song, Walking That Beach. Sunshine came softly through my window today. Cut it too tight, easy, but I changed my way. In a tick time, I know it, but in a while, gonna be mine, I know it. Do it in style. When you make your mind up, you're going to be mine. I'll tell you right now, any trick in the book, now, baby, that I can find. Everybody's hustling me just to have a little scene. When I say, "Well, be cool," I think that, you know what I mean. Stood on a beach at sunset, do you remember when? You know that beach? I know a beach where, baby, it never ends. When you've made your mind up completely to be mine, I'll tell you right now, any trick in the book, now, baby, that I can find. When you've made your mind up forever to be mine, I'll tell you right now, any trick in the book, now, baby, that I can find. Well, they sent a couple. I'll give you another if you would like. I've always felt my music to be educative and my role to be in service to society. And it's been proven these last 50 years. Here is my first song that was ever released. In the chilly hours and minutes of uncertainty, I wanna be in the warm home of your loving But I feel you all around me, and to take your hand along the sand. Ah, but I may as well try and catch the wind. When sundown hails the sky, I wanna hide awhile behind your smile. And everywhere I'd look, your eyes I'd find. For me to love you now, would be the sweetest thing to make me sing. Ah, but I may as well try and catch, ah, but I may as well try and catch the wind.
Okay, I'm gonna call Mr. Previn. Mr. Previn, on Items 1, 11, 14, and general public comment. Mr. City Attorney, we have, we're at a bear quorum, so I'm gonna do four minutes, three
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, distinguished gentlemen and gentleladies. Again, thank you for this great honor.
Thank you. minutes on the agenda items, one minute for general public comment. Thank you so very much. Mr. Keretz, thank you.
Very good.
All right, let us continue. Mr. Previn, 1, 11, 14.
Present the certificate.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, my goodness. Now, where's that photo?
It's Eric Previn from CD2.
Here it comes.
An item, there's a little section, party going on over there. Want me to continue?
Let's hold its time. Continue.
Thank you, sir. Item 1 and frankly, 2 have to do with real property, city property that is being, city-owned property. In the case of real, item number 1, it's being used, what we're actually gonna do, we're dedicating this city-owned real property as a public street lying on Mission and Golden State. It's just making it available for something. Item number 2 is related. It's instead of when we sell city surplus property, as we did in 2015, in 2016, 17, this is a very nice gesture, I think, by the city council, we're gonna be taking the proceeds, which would ordinarily be split-
Let's stick to the items.
Yeah, I'm explaining the item.
No, no, but you have, Mr. Previn, stick to the items that are on the cards-
No, I know. I think that this is a celebration, sir. I don't, please, I'm trying to explain, don't, I'm on-
No, 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 I run the meeting, Mr. Previn. Play by the rules.
Ordinarily, we would split it between real property trust funds and the general fund. But going forward for 16, 17, thanks to this body, we are gonna be making it available for affordable housing in the homeless crisis. So I would just like to say thank you, sir, for that. I think that that's a interesting gesture. But we have had some surplus properties that have been coming through city council historically and even as we speak, and-
Mr. Previn, stop, stop. Mr. Previn, you're gonna have to go to your general public comment. I'm not gonna warn you again. Well, I don't know why you insist on this. You won't talk on the items. We don't have a lot of rules here, and you know that. Speak to the items, please.
I am trying, sir. You are trying to hobble me on that, but item number 11 is an item, is that on the agenda that I was called on? I believe it is.
You know it is. I called it.
What's that?
I called it.
You did call me on that, correct. So I'm now gonna move to that item, away from the real property discussion you don't want.
Thank you. This, Mr. Previn's time on his items are gone. Let's go to his general public comment for one minute. General public comment, Mr. Previn. Go ahead.
That is a party foul, sir. You are completely out of line. I mean, that is really hard to believe. Well, I'm gonna make my general public comment anyway, which is that giving away real property has happened, we gave some to Scope, a not-for-profit, the other day, and I called foul because I wanted to make sure that it was heard by everyone. We gave some to Wine Troub of the Little LLC in Studio City for the firehouse, and we sold it. And then Celebrity Realty Holdings LLC, we didn't have real competitive bidding, we gave them a special price, and those guys are producing a lot of business for automobiles put on the road. Now, item 14 is Bonin is trying to restrict vehicles that are longer than 22 feet or seven feet high from going anywhere at night. Now, we need, as a city, to put places where people can put those vehicles, but to be rewarding with low bid, non-competitive offers to a group that is jacking up automobile production when all of our metro efforts are to reduce that.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Herman, you have Items 1, 11, 12, and 14. He'll be given his three minutes for that and one minute public comments. So put three. Stay on your subject matter, please.
Subject. Item 1, CD 14. City-owned real fucking property lying on the south fucking line of Mission Road and southwest of Golden State Freeway. On behalf of Caltrans, I say, fuck you. Now, moving on to item number 11. Communication from the mayor relative to the fucking exemption of one fucking policeman when we have crime escalating in this fucked-up city that you run under the position for the fucked-up Los Angeles Police Department, LAPD, in pursuit to Charter Section 1001, Item B. Fuck you. Now, I'm going to item number 13, bitches, CD 13.
No, there is no 13. It's 12.
Oh, 13, sir, here, on the agenda.
12.
Well, can I do 13?
Nope. Stay on the items.
Here it is.
No items.
Item 12, CD 8, relative to installing streets-
It's not before us 13, Mr. Herman. So you gotta go to 12. Item 13 is not before us. No, it's been referred to committee. Come on, go to, you have 12. I want you to speak. You got 12 and 14. Move. Move, move.
To promote and identify the empowerment of Congress for the area neighborhood development. August 8th of 2016, on behalf of the public, I say gently, fuck you. To approve the street barrier, fuck you, for the ADA program providing and identifying empowerment to fuck you, Congress, on the central area neighborhood development, like you fucked us on the issue on item 34 on Tuesday, for the record. Dealing with independent living, fuck you. $200 million plus $20 million-
Stay on the subject.
What item, sir, you want me on now? I got 38 seconds. What's the last item?
14.
Fuck you. On CD 11, shown here by Bonin and that fucking pussy Busciano, who can't sit down to hear the subject of criticism relative to establishment of fucking parking for residents for oversized vehicles, as Wayne Spiller and I, over and over in Transformation Committee, have been kicked out because we say, fuck you. Let people live and sleep in their fucking vehicles and stop harassing and retaliating, you stupid motherfucker. That's for the record.
Give him his minute. Give him his minute. Go ahead.
General public comment. Fuck you, we're the four-year-old wetback from Zacatecas Morales. Fuck you for the record. Are you really an American citizen? Because this is one badass motherfucking American citizen raging on the input of why a wetback from Mexico takes away our homes and housing on Broadway Fiesta. And for the record, on behalf of the public's interest in the safeguard of American citizenship, fuck you, fuck you. And on behalf of all Americans, to Trump, 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 for the record, City Attorney, independent living, fuck you on your $225 million. Take it up the ass and pay up, bitch. That's what you've done to the American people, and that's why I wore NWA for the record to prove my point. First Amendment, Donald Trump says to all of you, do your-
Thank you. Thank you. Your time's expired. Thank you. Okay, now, let's vote on, you're disrupting the meeting now, Mr. Herman. Okay, now, Madam Clerk, I believe we can vote on Items 1, 11, 12, and 14.
Yes, Mr. President.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, general public comment, if I could get Sandra Grant, Jacqueline Richardson, please come forward. Sandra Grant and Jacqueline Richardson.
Good morning. My name is Sandra Grant. I have to first say that I'm really, I'm really speechless with the fact that you listened to someone else actually voice their opinion. I don't know what else to say. I'm coming to you this morning because I wanted to present to you a concept that I developed. I am a software development startup company. My daughter and I relocated to California after discovering that a software design that I created was being piloted in Denver, Colorado, School District. My design model is called Edustats. It is data analytics for learning. I discovered that, and in conversations with a small IT firm in Atlanta, they too had considered piloting my software, Edustats, within the DeKalb County School District. I decided to come to California because I-
One minute for general public comment.
Thank you.
I hope you come back so you can finish the story, but if you have any paperwork or something, could you please give it to the sergeant? Would you please, sergeants? And we'll get copies and make sure the other members get them. And good luck to you. Ms. Richardson? Ms. Richardson?
Questions and statements about Russians in this city. One man said that Vladimir, the president of Russia, only sends Russian people with criminal records to this city. They only send Russians with criminal records to the city. How do the Russians read the Bible, is the next statement. Some Russians violate the civil rights of others by taking movies of them in their home without the person knowing it and broadcasting the results to other Russians for their amusement that people are not aware they're doing that. The Russians kill black people for no reason. I don't believe it's the Russians doing it. I believe it's the holographs that are doing the killing. National disasters have been going on for years. I wonder if it's the holographs doing the killing, that causing the disasters, or is it the theory by low cell high? Are they watching the holographs to see what the holographs are doing when they're not near them?
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, I believe Item 10 has been circulated.
Yes, Mr. President.
So on that item, why don't we open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote?
10 ayes.
Okay, what business is currently before this body?
Council has motions for posting a referral, sir.
Okay, they're posted and referred, and let's send Item 11 forthwith.
Mr. President, there's a request to send Item 10 forthwith also.
Without objection, that'll be the order. Announcements, members, announcements. If I could have everyone please rise. Everyone in the council chambers, please rise for adjourning motions, please rise. I'm looking to my right side. I do not see any to my right. Looking to my left side, I don't see any to the left. Members, this meeting is adjourned. Have a good weekend.